Okay, this is warm-up time. Get the makeup on. Cardenia right here with Gilbert Digital and pictures will be taken and put out on our website, on Facebook. Oh, well, just come right up here. What have you got?
Are you feeling okay tonight?
Yes. Well, there's a little bit of, I'm, you remember you play hide and go seek and you lose something? I'm looking for my voice and I think the Student Citizens of the Month will help me find it, but what is this?
I have our social media cards, they're actually magnets. If you go to our Facebook account tonight, definitely by tomorrow morning, you'll see our Student Citizen Award pictures up there. Thank you for being here.
On that note, we've officially started. I am Mayor John Lewis Welkum. And if at any point I pass the microphone to Vice Mayor Cook, you'll know why. Vice Mayor Cook, raise your hand. The one to be introducing will be Councilmember Jen Daniels. We also have Councilmember Ben Cooper, Jared Taylor, Victor Peterson helping. And we are so glad to have you here. We have a couple of announcements because this is a group that wants to know what's going on in Gilbert. First, the Gilbert, or excuse me, the Arizona Republic and the Gilbert section, they are trying to define in Gilbert, what do we call ourselves? And so they're doing a vote and it ends tomorrow. So if you happen to have an opinion, you can go out to the website, it's listed up there, and help us determine whether we are Gilberters, Gilbertans, Gilbertites and so forth, and you can help us define what to call ourselves. You had no idea you were going to get that question tonight, did you? The other thing we wanted to show is some of the activities, especially in the month of November. This is our Gilbert Days month and so you can go out to the website of the town of Gilbert and then also see some of the events that you'll see in the newspapers and here around town. But we have our 5K run that will be coming up tomorrow. Gilbert Days rodeo, the concert series, the parade, a week from Saturday, the Gilbert Days festival, the turkey trot, and all sorts of wonderful things happening this month. You're invited to everything. The next thing we do is we divide you into groups of three, and this is our Student Citizen of the Month recipients. The first group will come up all at the same time and then one at a time, you'll come here for a picture with the mayor. And then we'll do the whole group together with all the council. And so if you happen to attend an elementary school and the first letter of your elementary school is from A to J, and that could be like Ashland Ranch or the Islands Elementary, if that's the case, you're in group number one, please come on down. And let's, I'm standing right back here. If you would like to, if you're a teacher or a parent or family member would like to take a picture, invited to come right up here at the right time and take a picture and then we'll do a group picture together. So at this point, my voice will be turned over to Councilmember Daniels, please.
Thanks, Mayor. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Wyatt Thompson. And from Islands Elementary, Lola Warren.
And one of the council members, what's in the bag? This is a Shop Gilbert bag? And to the group one, come on up, we're going to stand right here for a group picture. And Councilmember Cooper, what do we find in there?
There's a beautiful certificate to accompany the plaque that they received. There's also a couple of great gift certificates from Gilbert Businesses and they have to do with ice cream and frozen yogurt. No suggestion there, but you know, as kids, pay attention, there's ice cream and yogurt possibly in this.
Thank you. And the bags are Think Shop Gilbert. Okay, very good. All right, so the rest of the council will get in. Let's give group one a big round of applause. Now, the other two groups, we'll do in the next 15 minutes. If you're able to stay, we invite you to stay. If you need to leave, you can leave. And before we bring group two up, I did want to recognize any of the teachers, administrators, principals who are here, would you please stand and be recognized? We continue to express appreciation to you. Gilbert recently was named the 22nd best place to live in the United States and it has so much to do with those individuals who just stood. Thank you for being part of our number one asset in Gilbert. Group two will be if your elementary school has a first letter K to Z, please come on I was reminded also in those Think Shop Gilbert bags, there's a copy of the United States Constitution, which we're proud of too. This is our group two and we will continue with Councilmember Daniels.
From Oak Tree Elementary, Gabriela A. Rodriguez. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Trevor Tenney. From Settlers Point Elementary, Victoria Burgett. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Brady Campbell. And from Valvista Lakes Elementary, Maya Russell.
Group two, come on up and we'll take a picture together. Give them a big round of applause. Thank you. You may return to your seats. We now invite group three. If you are in junior high or high school, come on down.
So Cooley's first. Who has Cooley? Okay.
Group three, Councilmember Daniels, please.
From Gilbert Junior High, Hayden S. Moore. From Greenfield Junior High, Kaylee Clemente Casey. That's Cali Clemente Casey, sorry. From Mesquite High School, Celeste Art Payne. From South Valley Junior High, Erin Tellez. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Mohin Patel. No? Okay. From Gilbert Classical, Taylor Alinsky. Sometimes we have some leftover at the end that are from mispresentations and so she's totally deserving of this even though I needed help.
Thank you. We'll invite group three to come forward for a picture. Thank you. To all of you who have attended our Student Citizen of the Month, thank you. Carry on with those good activities in the community. We appreciate you being here and friends and family and school leaders and teachers. Thank you. This officially ends our Student Citizen of the Month. Council meeting will begin in about two minutes and you're invited to stay. And you're invited to stay.
[Music]
To the Boy Scouts, thank you. We will begin our meeting in about five seconds. Welcome to our November 13th, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. We officially call the meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation. As the agenda states, "The invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information." Tonight, we're pleased to have Reverend William Jefferson of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, Gilbert Lodge 2848 here to offer the invocation. Reverend Jefferson.
Could we bow our heads? Oh God, who has had compassion on our darkness and sent forth your own light upon our conscience to make right judgments, grant us the joy of knowing the closeness of your love. May all our words and actions this day be infused with the creative freedom of your spirit and bring forth personal integrity as well as justice that will bind together the people of this community in goodness. May true freedom and righteousness reign in our hearts and become contagious in all our actions. May God be blessed the gang today by us and in all who endeavor to serve. Let's be God now and forever. Amen.
Thank you. We invite those in council chambers to please rise. And Councilmember Daniels, can you introduce the scout who leaves in the pledge?
We do. We have Gabe here with us tonight. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a large and good-looking group of scouts here tonight, Mayor, and we're going to pass the mic down and have each of them introduce themselves and tell us your name and your rank, please.
Alan Langford from Troop 689 in Gilbert, former Eagle Scout, current Eagle Scout, and glad to be here.
Mike Rayly, Scout Master of Troop 689.
Gabby Rayly from Troop 689, Second Class.
Zaya Gonzalez from Troop 689, First Class, I mean Second Class.
Leslie Blair from Troop 689, Life Scout.
Ben Langford, Troop 689, Life Scout.
Jaden Green, Troop 681, Tenderfoot.
Tyler Huffman, Troop 681, Tenderfoot.
Josh Orton, Troop 681, Second Class.
Jake Tucker, Troop 681, Second Class.
Joe Ray, Troop 681, First Class.
Jesse Thatcher, Troop 183, Star Scout.
Dante Valdez, Troop 183, Tenderfoot.
Caleb Jones, Troop 183, I am a Star Scout.
Jessie Reed, I'm Troop 183, Star Scout.
Jacob Gao, 183, a Star Scout.
Michael Moon, Troop 393, Star Scout.
Brian Rollinson, Troop 183, Life Scout.
Stranger Cedar, Group 393, Tenderfoot.
Ethan Williams, Troop 393, First Class.
T. Trees, Troop 393, First Class.
Brigham Bent, Troop 393, First Class.
David Bent, Troop 393, Scout Master.
Mark Whitesel, Troop 183, Assistant Scout Master.
Marcus Evans, Troop 183, Eagle Scout.
And we have one more in here, one leader that didn't get to introduce himself.
Abram Ellsworth, Scout Master, 681.
That's great. These scouts provide a tremendous amount of leadership in our community. We're grateful for all the service that they provide. Not a week goes by that the Town of Gilbert doesn't get a request for an Eagle Scout project. That tells you something about all the hard work these young men do and we appreciate all that they do. So Mayor, back to you. Thanks.
Thank you to the scouts. We express appreciation. Thank you for being here tonight. You may be seated. Our Deputy Clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Agenda item number one will be presented by Councilmember Taylor with the assistance of Councilmember Ray.
Mayor Lewis, thank you for letting me present the proclamation and read a few points here. This is recognizing Small Business Saturday, which is November 29th, and Gilbert is joining a lot of municipalities around the nation in recognizing the contributions of our small businesses. And this is very critical. Let me just read you a couple of metrics to understand the power and remind you of the power of our small business community. The first paragraph here, "The government of Town of Gilbert celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community." According to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the U.S. They represent more than 99% of American employer firms. It's a pretty big contribution to our economy, our small businesses. They create more than 2/3 of the net new jobs and create and generate 46% of gross, private gross domestic product. And there's some other things in the proclamation that are important, but it's just so critical. And so our challenge to you, as you think about where you're going to shop for Black Friday, there's lots of great options. Think of our small businesses and their wonderful contribution and how you can put a few things under your Christmas tree for Small Business Saturday. Councilmember Ray's here with me. He's the council liaison to our small business group and he has a few words here.
Thank you. In addition to encouraging everyone to shop local, we also want to thank those groups in the town who do so much to help the small businesses. We have the Chamber of Commerce and we have the Small Business Alliance, two organizations that help promote businesses, which then in turn helps the town. We are grateful for them and thank them for their efforts.
Thank you. Thank you all. If I get us out to the council tonight, we also have some visitors in Gilbert. The Local First Arizona group has come to Gilbert tonight and they're in downtown Gilbert. They're shopping four different places and enjoying lots of good food and they, before I came down, they expressed appreciation to Gilbert for all that we have to offer. Agenda item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. This last Tuesday, we had a wonderful remembrance of our veterans on Veterans Day. And over the last weekend and last week, there were a number of wonderful celebrations here in the Phoenix metropolitan area. And even here in Gilbert, on Thursday of last week, we had a celebration of our veterans and honoring them. With that, I'd like to read a little statement here, which will recognize some of our own Gilbert residents who have served our country, who have been honored in the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. Veterans who have honorably served in the military and continue to serve their community and/or other veterans are eligible for selection for the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. The following Gilbert residents have been inducted into the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. And if you're here after I read your name, would you please come stand next to me? And after that, we'll have the mayor say a couple of words here. Lieutenant Colonel Laurel Fox served the United States Air Force, inducted into the Veterans Hall of Fame in 2005. Tech Sergeant Paul Suisak, United States Air Force, inducted in 2008. Captain John Sense, United States Navy, inducted in 2009. Colonel Carl Koloff, United States Army, inducted in 2011. Specialist Five Oscar Uriah, United States Army, inducted in 2013. And Third Class Petty Officer James Monroe, United States Navy, inducted this year, 2014. May we have a wonderful round of applause for their service in our community.
While you're still up here, two days ago, Gilbert received another great recognition as being, for our veterans in the country, the second best place for veterans to call home. And this group had a little bit to do with that. And we appreciate you being here. I had a chance two weeks ago to attend the annual Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame Luncheon, and where three of the individuals in past years were recognized. This particular year, this young man to my right was the one from Gilbert, inducted. And so, Jim, give us just the quick feelings about that and anything else you'd like to share. And thank you too for being in charge of the East Valley Veterans Parade.
You're welcome. The good thing about the East Valley Veterans Parade is everyone had a good time. It's over with and we all came back alive. The, John Sense, my cohort over here, recommended me for the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. And when he called me about it, I said, "John, you know, there's so many people that deserve this as opposed to me." And after a fourth or fifth call, he said, "You know, you can say what you want to. I'm going to try to put you in there." And he did. And as Mayor Lewis said, we had the induction ceremony several weeks ago and I had no idea what to expect, but what was there was far, far more than anything I had anticipated. I think we're like 450 people there. Secretary of State, John, and Don Voight with the Arizona Veterans Services was there. Lots of, lots of people and a lot of veterans. And I had a really good time and got to meet some people that I didn't think I would ever get to meet. And since I've been involved now, I'm beginning to learn about the Hall of Fame, the society and the association, and I look forward to being involved in it in the future.
Captain Sense, is this now number seven from Gilbert? Number six. Thank you. Seven will be next here now. There's a sign right here. Would it be okay if I borrowed your sign? We're about to do a picture. Bring it on up here. Thank you. All right, with this sign, we're ready for the picture. Let's give this group a big round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Gilbert, we sure do appreciate our veterans. We also have an award-winning staff. And it wasn't so long ago that we got to recognize our budget team for some great work that they have done. And tonight, we get to recognize Gilbert Digital for some awesome awards that they've won. And so we'd invite the Gilbert Digital team to come down, front and center. They love to be in front of the camera. Typically, they're behind the camera, but today, they get to be in front of the cameras. So we'd invite them to come down. Councilmember Peterson and I will have the pleasure and privilege of being with you for this presentation. Now Dana, you lead this team. Would you mind telling us a little bit about these great awards that you have won for Gilbert Digital or for the digital state of the town and some of the other things you've done?
Sure. Absolutely. Well, I'm sure many of you know that we have quite an exceptional communications department here at Gilbert and we're really focused on doing all things digital. And one of the largest initiatives and projects that we've sort of invented ourselves the past two years has been a digital state of the town, which is the annual mayoral address. And instead of having the mayor stand up in front of everyone, we've created a 20-minute, approximately 20-minute video production that can be viewed by anyone, anywhere in the country, from home, on your tablet, on your phone, on your computer. And also, we usually have an event where we show it. And so we've been recognized with a few national awards and a local public relations award for the production. And we've even had a production company call us and say, "How much did you spend on making your digital state of the town and what production company did you use?" And I get to proudly say, "We did it all in-house with my amazing staff," which includes two digital journalists, Gardini La Madrid and Jessica Bautista. And this is Jennifer Alvarez and Alfredo Moreno. And Zarabish couldn't be here tonight, but she's also an integral part of the team. And that's it. And I'm really proud of, you're going to actually see a few commercial spots that they've also just recently produced that's promoting our next digital state of the town. that's coming in February.
Wonderful. And you guys do a wonderful project. You're all over the community, and you're telling everyone about what's going on. You also work magic. Sometimes, you're given really rough characters that you have to video, and you have to edit it out. And as you'll see in item number four, they really had their work cut out for them on one of them. And I just, my hat's off to you. You guys are great.
I wasn't going to say anything, but it's a perfect segue into my thought. You actually made us look professional, us, the council members. Craziest thing. But there is evidence that we are not trained TV personalities. Just watch the blooper reel. If you haven't seen it, you've missed out. Really, it's good.
Okay, all right, let's do a picture.
Mayor, council, and everyone here tonight at the town council meeting, my name is Gardenia La Madrid. This is Jessica Bautista. We are both digital journalists in the communications department for the town of Gilbert. We are honored to receive recognition for last year's digital state of the town. And in preparation for our 2015 Digital State of the Town premiere in February, we've produced four commercial spots, pardon me, that we'd like to share with you. This year, our theme is Growing Up Gilbert, highlighting people who were raised in Gilbert and are now working and giving back into the Gilbert community. On a personal note, I just recently moved to Gilbert. Jessica and her husband Drew are raising their son here in Gilbert. So when we produce pieces like you'll see tonight, it makes us proud to live and work in Gilbert. So, we're going to share this with you now. A sneak peek at our 2015 Digital State of the Town. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Growing up in Gilbert was a great experience. Four generations of my family live here. I've seen the community grow and change into what it is today. When it came time to choose a career, I chose to become a Gilbert firefighter so that I could give back to the community that raised me. I love what I do. I love working here. I'm part of a team that's committed to safety, and I get to help people every day. I grew up here. This is my home. This is Gilbert.
Growing up in Gilbert, I received a quality education and learned the value of community and family. I moved to the East Coast for nearly a decade to work in the television business, but came back home to Arizona to raise my family. I now work for Gilbert as their chief digital officer. It feels wonderful to give back to the community that truly made me who I am today. I grew up here. This is where I work. This is Gilbert.
Growing up in Gilbert, I received a quality education and learned the value of community and family. I moved to the East Coast for nearly a decade to work in the television business, but came back home to Arizona to raise my family. I now work for Gilbert as their chief digital officer. It feels wonderful to give back to the community that truly made me who I am today. I grew up here. This is where I work. This is Gilbert.
Growing up in Gilbert, I didn't have an ordinary childhood. I was born with a congenital heart defect, and I spent tons of time in and out of the hospital. I've had broken heart surgeries, the first, and I was just six months old. I wanted to give back to kids in need, so I started a teddy bear drive to provide comfort to kids in hospitals like this one. We've been able to expand the drive to help thousands of kids all across the country. I'm growing up here. I'm paying a forward to kids like me. This is Gilbert.
Growing up in Gilbert, I never imagined that one day it would be bustling with more than a quarter of a million people. I always wanted to give back to the community where I had been raised. What better way to do that than to run for public office? As a council member, I've been able to help set the direction of growth and prosperity for decades to come. I've been coming to downtown Gilbert for more than 30 years, and now I'm raising my family here. I grew up here. My children are growing up here. This is Gilbert.
Thank you again.
Growing up in Gilbert, I never imagined...
To our Gilbert Digital team, thank you, and congratulations. Before we, and Kurt, if you could get the, what we showed in Student Citizen of the Month. At the end of our meeting, we typically have the current events, and I just add that right now, that voting that's taking place through the Arizona Republic in the special Gilbert section ends tomorrow, where we're looking for feedback on what we want to call ourselves. And there are five options. The link for that is on the screen. And because the voting ends tomorrow, we invite you to jump in and give your opinion. The next slide offers various events that will be happening over the next few weeks in the month of November. One being tomorrow, the Gilbert Days 5K and One Mile Run. The Gilbert Days Rodeo is also this weekend. Various events, a concert series, and the parade is a week from Saturday. Festival a week from Saturday, and the Turkey Trot taking place on Thanksgiving Day. All these events, more details are found on our website and will also be in the paper. We invite you to participate. Thank you. Next on the agenda, the communication from citizens. As noted, the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town staff, jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter, comment upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cook, do we have some requests tonight?
Mayor, we have one individual that would like to speak tonight. We'd like to invite Jerry McBee. And Jerry, if you can state your residency, and you'll have three minutes to share with us. I'd love to give you four. You have three.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Jerry McBee, and I've lived in Gilbert for way back when Gilbert had dirt roads, okay? I want to talk very quickly and very shortly. I'm impressed at what happens to Gilbert. I'm impressed at the digital age and what's happened. But also, I'm so impressed that I'm going to officially announce my retirement and activities within Gilbert. I think after 30 years, it's time for me to go play in somebody else's dirt pile. In saying that, I had an opportunity, or have an opportunity, to go on the national scale, maybe, if I accept it. Become the spokesman and the political poker, if you want to call it, for lack of a better term, for the organization known as the Gold Prospectors Association of America. And they have somewhere between 40,000 and 50,000 members in that organization, okay? So I'm going to leave Gilbert alone. But I do have a couple of questions, though. One, I live on West Encinas and Gilbert Office Staple, you know, and Cooper Road out there doing Guadalupean baseline. How come every time we call the city and we say, "Hey, we need our road fixed," they say, "Well, we don't own that road. That's county." You know, if that's a true statement, then we're going to, I'm going to circulate, one of the last things I'm going to do, circulate a petition in my neighborhood, and we're going to succeed from Gilbert. Somebody, please tell us that you own the town, that you own this road. Come on, fix my road, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pass that one to town leadership. Now, as our town attorney was, really, we can't comment on any of that, but maybe to the council, if, after 30-plus years, to Jerry, we may need to have him at a future council meeting to be recognized for many, many acts of service and giving direction and counsel. So Jerry, thank you. We'll leave it at that, based on the town attorney. Vice Mayor Cook, consent calendar. With the, we have discussed, we know that agenda item number six, we want to have some further discussion. And so, with the council's permission, I will move that to the administrative part of tonight's meeting, knowing that's more of an internal discussion. And so, outside of agenda item number six, Vice Mayor Cook, what requests do we have on the consent calendar?
We have none tonight.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve agenda items five, seven through 15, including 12A. Second.
Okay, with that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a seven vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, on the public hearing items 16 through 20, do we have some requests from the public?
Mayor, we do have three individuals that would like to speak on agenda item 19.
Okay, thank you. Before I read what is on the agenda, to the council on public hearing items 16, 17, 18, and 20, would any of the six of you want further discussion on those items?
Mayor, I think 20 and 19.
Oh, excuse me, 19 and 20 are together. That's right. So 16, 17, 18, 21. Thank you. So I will open the public hearing on agenda items 16, 17, and 18, and I will close the public hearing on agenda items 16, 17, and 18, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve agenda items 16, 17, and 18. Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven vote. Thank you. As listed on the agenda, in just a few moments, members of the public will be invited to speak on agenda item number 19. They have filled out a public comment form, and if there are any other citizens that wish to be heard, they will have that option to be part of the public hearing. At this time, I open the public hearing for agenda item number 19. And to our town staff, if you could give, for those here in council chambers, a quick overview of this, we will now turn the time to you.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Members of the council will be happy to do so. Nathan Williams, planner here at the town. We're here to discuss two agenda items, rezoning and appeal of a use permit for Gilbert Town Center.
And Nathan, thank you. You reminded me, 19 and 20 are so closely tied. Let me also open the public hearing for 20. So we've opened the public hearing for both 19 and 20. Thank you. Continue.
So, as I mentioned, we have, as you mentioned, we have two agenda items here, rezoning use permit. The rezoning includes 25.3 acres at the southeast corner of Gilbert Warner Roads, right outside the doors here. And the use permit is 13.7 acres on the southeastern parcel here, as you see here. So, as you can see, those are the two separate items, but they're not the exact same area. I just wanted to make that distinction. The rezoning request is to modify an existing development plan on the site that was approved by council in 2005. And the use permit is required to allow multifamily uses in the regional commercial zoning district as part of an integrated mixed-use development plan. So what we have here, go through a little history with you. This is the old development plan. It was approved in 2005 for Gilbert Town Center and included the entire site, which was 37, just over 37 acres. It included about 180 square feet of commercial uses, 1,200 residents throughout, and six four- and five-story condo buildings, which you see predominantly here on the eastern side of the parcel. I'd mentioned that in the staff report in 2005, it mentioned that those condominium buildings each had around 50 office units in them as well. So you could see this is, as the previous use permit allowed, it was a mixed-use development included home office, as I mentioned, loft living, lofts above retail, and retail development as well. So there's another graphic of the previous approved use permit. I make the distinction of use permit because in 2005, a use permit was required, as it is now, to allow multifamily uses in regional commercial. So they had a use permit for this 37-acre site to allow Gilbert Town Center in there with those statistics that I just mentioned, in terms of commercial and residential and so forth. So they were subject to integrated mixed-use development standards as well. So this plan here, as you could see, demonstrates a number of things. We'll kind of go through them a little bit. It has cohesive integrated site development. You see trails, you see plazas. I've circled some of them here. There's outdoor grass areas and hardscape, lakes, trails throughout the 37 acres that not just link the 37-acre piece together of Gilbert Town Center, but also connects to the municipal center here, existing retail that was at the east and still is at the east, obviously, and the apartments there to the east as well. So as you can see, this is a good example of an integrated mixed-use development plan that complemented the nearby commercial, retail, and municipal uses. What we have here is the development plan proposed for the site now, with the banner health centerpiece cut out. It's in the middle of it. As I, as you can see here, the southeast portion is the apartment complex portion, and the northwest corner is where the proposed commercial and retail is located. Go to the next slide. So as I was, as we were talking about a little bit earlier, the, well, let me go back to the other slide. I want to talk a little bit more about the rezoning request before I move on to the use permit. So also with the rezoning request, there's some deviations requested. I should mention that. The deviations they're requesting are to reduce the building setback along Palm Street and along Civic Center Drive from the regional commercial setbacks that are 20 and 25 feet to 10 feet on both sides. So the buildings they want to place along Civic Center and along Palm are 10 feet from the building setback or from the right-of-way line. Additionally, they don't want to have a, there's no, they're requesting no building step back at the third story. So all those buildings have a third-story component to them, at least in part. They would normally have to be stepped back 10 feet from the facade of the building for any structures within 100 feet of residential, which are, there's all single-family residential along Civic Center. They would like to deviate from that requirement and not have a building step back. We'll talk about the use permit now. Essentially, a use permit, as we talked about, to allow multifamily and regional commercial is required to be an integrated mixed-use development plan. So that's been the way, it's always been since 2005, since the Land Development Code was adopted. Well, recently, we added to the findings of fact to allow multifamily and regional commercial to, really, it was created in order to help kind of refine and help the planning commission really review and better understand what an integrated mixed-use development plan is. So let's go through. These are the four additional findings of fact that were created. A mixture of land uses. This is defined in the code as "an efficient integration of non-residential and residential uses intended to cultivate a sense of live, work, play." Sustainability through compact design. Quite simply, this is just configuration of buildings, parking, streets, and gathering areas that reduce the dependence on an automobile and the impact on the natural environment. You've got pedestrian scale and orientation. This is better defined as "all portions of the development are accessible through convenient and safe systems of pedestrian connectivity." And then finally, transportation and connectivity, defined as "a project that provides appropriate vehicular and pedestrian connections and is served by vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles, all in one." So there's an example of such. Now, this is the specific plan that's, the applicant has provided for the use permit. So again, we talked about the use permit is just the 13.7 acres at the southeast corner. This is an enlargement of that, and this is essentially the plan that's proposed for the use permit on that site. As we talked about earlier, it has to be part of an integrated mixed-use development. We just touched on what those findings are that kind of define what an integrated mixed-use development is. Staff does not believe that this is an integrated mixed-use development, but rather a standalone apartment complex on the subject site. This is also a plan provided by the applicant. It shows the overall proposal in relation to the entire 37 acres and municipal complex. As you can see here, here's the proposed apartment complex on the 13.7 acres. Here's the banner health center that exists today or in part. And here's the proposed northwest parcel for office, or excuse me, commercial, retail, and so forth. So also, we've had some questions on, in terms of what, you know, number of units in the area, number of multifamily units in the area. So... So put together this slide that kind of demonstrates that and inventories it for you. There's some existing and there's some proposed, so we'll go through them just a little bit briefly. As you can see, there's a, an existing apartment complex here, the Legacy Gilbert Town Center. That's one hundred and forty-seven units, and it was approved in 2000. Obviously, it exists today. As you can see, on the west side of Gilbert Road, there's three hundred and seven units that were approved a year and a half ago. The site was rezoned to multifamily and allowed for a maximum of three hundred and seven units on this site, Gilbert Town Square is what that's called. So those are the, the number of units that are actually approved. Now, in terms of proposed, we have a recent proposal of one hundred and fifty-three units on the old Ben Franklin School Site that the applicant is requesting. And then, of course, we have the two hundred and fifty-six units that are proposed through this use permit for Gilbert Town Center. In total, that's a total of eight hundred and sixty-three apartment units that are proposed and approved in this immediate area. Also wanted to touch on the Planning Commission. So in October, the Planning Commission heard this, both projects, both applications. And I'll go through a little bit of a summary of the vote. So both applications were recommended for approval. Actually, the rezoning was recommended for approval at a four-three vote. The use permit was approved at a four-three vote and then later appealed to use. That's why you're hearing both. And I'll just touch on a couple of, there's a lot of words up here, obviously. We'll just touch on a few of the yes-vote comments. The Planning Commissioners felt it was a good, multifamily was a good use for the site, that the commission should not be rigid on their concepts for the findings of fact for integrated mixed-use. The total number of units has been reduced from the original, and therefore, traffic concerns are reduced. And then multifamily is a viable use on the site, and residents were needed in the area to support retail. With regard to some of the no votes, we'll touch on those. Essentially, the, some of the no's that stood out were "proposed site shows partialization, not integrated" as required by the findings of fact to allow multifamily and RC. It's a standard standalone apartment complex, and the site is over thirty acres and should continue to meet the intended regional commercial zoning requirements. So again, a lot of words, but the intent of this slide is essentially to demonstrate that at the Planning Commission, staff recommended denial. And as we talked about, they provided a vote of four to three in favor. Staff's recommendation of denial was based upon our belief that the proposed rezoning does not conform with the goals and policies of the general plan as outlined in your staff report. Additionally, we do not support the proposed deviations from the code. And finally, the proposed findings of fact that are required for integrated mixed-use development and RC, as we discussed earlier, we don't feel like it complies with those findings of fact either, that you need in order to have a multifamily use in a regional commercial zoning district. The mixture of land uses, transportation and connectivity, pedestrian scale and orientation, and sustainability through compact design. So staff did not feel that it met any of those findings. And finally, again, the recommendation of the Planning Commission to you for the rezoning was for approval at a four-three vote. And they again approved the use permit at a four-three vote, which was then appealed to you. So with that, I'll close and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at this point from the council? Thank you. We will invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Paul Gilbert. I've appreciated the town being named after me and my family all these years. But I don't live here. My address is in Paradise Valley. I'm here representing the property owner and the proposed developer of the property, which is the Alliance Group. With me, I have representatives from both groups here this evening. We also are very interested in selling the property that is located at the immediate corner of Gilbert and Warner Roads to the Peterson Group, and we have a representative from them here this evening. I'll be talking about them. I think he may well have filled out a card. My challenge this evening is to make this reasonably short. Yes, I see some heads nodding. At the Planning Commission, I took over an hour in the presentation. I asked the mayor if I could have an hour this evening, and he promptly told me that if I did, we would lose all seven of your votes. So I'm going to try to be succinct, but I've got a lot of material to cover. And let me jump in and try it, and I'll try to get this done with as much efficiency and dispatch as possible. As we reason together, I think the first point I want to make this evening is this. The property is currently zoned multifamily. Now, there's a lot of talk in town about we don't want to eat up all our commercial property and transfer it to multifamily. In this case, the property is already zoned RC with a plan on it that allows multifamily. The original 2005 plan allowed twelve thousand units on all three parcels. If you take the Banner parcel out, which we'll discuss in more detail shortly, the remaining approved density is eight hundred units. Now, the ordinance that put this twelve hundred units on is still in effect. It's the ordinance that applies to this piece of property. So ordinance sixteen eighty-nine is still in effect. We overlook the fact that we have an approved site plan on this parcel and approved zoning. The only reason we're here this evening is that we had to, or the use permit that was originally approved is only good for three years, so it expired, compelling us to come back and go through this zoning hearing. Importantly, I would ask you to focus that the ordinance sixteen eighty-nine, which applies to this piece of property, except for the banner piece, specifically stipulated to a site plan. And that's the site plan that I want you to look at right here. So the ordinance says this is the zoning. The ordinance says you got to comply with this site plan. So what we have on the property, and staff confirmed this in their presentation, is a very dense multifamily project along with commercial. The elevations, I think, say it more cogently than I could ever come up with. It's a five-story elevation. And we've got both, that shows the elevation, and there's another elevation. These drawings and elevations are taken from the application. So we didn't make these up to illustrate this case. They are in the file, and they are part of the approval of sixteen eighty-nine. Second point we wish to focus on is that you heard perhaps ad nauseam from the staff that the vote was four-three. It was, four-three in favor. But I submit of tremendous importance, and I request you focus on this, that all seven members of the Planning Commission said in the course of the two hearings that we had that multifamily was an appropriate use on this parcel. So I stand before you this evening in the posture of a recommendation of four-three in favor, but also statements from all the Planning Commission acknowledging that multifamily was the appropriate use on this piece of property. The aerial that is up shows the, all three parcels. My client, Lehman Brothers, purchased all three parcels. You've heard a little bit of the history, but Banner came along several years ago and bought the middle parcel. When that happened, it left a gap between the two parcels that we remain owning, the parcel that is the subject matter of our hearing this evening and the piece that is zoned also for RC at the immediate corner of Gilbert and Warner. So the challenge we have is, of course, to deal with the fact that the Banner parcel separates these two parcels. Now, we were all compliant in that. My client agreed to sell it to Banner, but I must add with all candor that the town of Gilbert was enthusiastic about having Banner come and encourage Banner. And the Planning Commission, at the time this case was in, Banner came in and said, "We don't want to be part of this RC anymore. We want to be separate." However, the Planning Commission and the town council agreed and zoned the property RC. So it has the same zoning. It just asked to be removed. When that happened, the Planning Commission, I submit very astutely, observed, "If we allow this Banner case to be approved and be removed, it's going to be very hard to integrate the rest of the site." So even that, with that acknowledgement, the Planning Commission went ahead and approved the application. Integration was not discussed whatsoever at the town council hearing. So let's come back now with that predicate in place and look at the plan that has been approved. We submit, and this is contrary to your staff report, that we are not removing commercial square footage from the site. There will be virtually the same amount of commercial on the subject property as there was under the original 2005 plan. So this is not a case where we are taking commercial and transferring it to residential. This chart shows you the amount of square footage for retail and commercial. It was approximately one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. What are we proposing now? Factoring in the banner, of course, because that's commercial, one hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet. So what you have in this case is the same, relatively the same amount of commercial that was approved in the original plan. So this is not, repeat, not a case where we are taking commercially-zoned property and transferring it or changing it to residential. In fact, in the course of my presentation, I think I'm going to be able to empirically demonstrate you're going to get even more retail if you adopt this plan this evening. We don't stop there. The concern I've heard from the staff and others is the proverbial camel's nose in the tent. Somebody referred to that earlier today. And what's going to happen is, well, if we approve this parcel for multifamily, pretty soon, Mr. Gilbert will come along and say, "Oh, shucks, golly gee, we've had this parcel zoned at the corner for umpteen million years, and we just can't develop it. So would you give us some more multifamily?" Good argument. We have nipped that argument in the bud, however. We are agreeing to a deed restriction that restricts this property for retail. To make sure that was enforceable, I prepared the deed restriction in advance, and I have submitted it to your town attorney. I do not want to embarrass him, but I am of the opinion that that is an enforceable deed restriction. It runs to the town. If you have any questions, you should feel free to ask him, but I suspect he will tell you that that is an enforceable deed restriction. Now, note how we have set this up. Right now, we can put a combination of retail and office on the property. If we put office on the property, you don't get the sales tax that will be generated from retail. We are actually increasing the amount of sales tax because that deed restriction, again, which runs to the town, specifically says we can only put retail on this piece of property. So there will be even more tax dollars generated for the town as the result of this case and the concomitant deed restriction we are providing. Item number four is that we have had no immediate neighborhood opposition on this case. Now, there are still people here. I'm assuming the scouts are not in opposition, but that one always is reticent to make that statement at public hearings like this because I'm so disappointed, scouts. I'm making some great points here. You may want to stay. Oh, okay. Thank you. I understand. It's a little disheartening to have a good part of your audience walk out in the middle of your presentation, but I shall try to proceed with vigor. We've walked the neighborhood twice and held a neighborhood meeting. There have been two letters submitted in opposition. I found out tonight that apparently Jerry McVie, my old friend, may speak against me this evening, but in the immediate neighborhood, and thus far, we've only had two letters. Those letters in opposition said they were concerned about traffic and density. I can quickly address those issues and efficiently point out, hopefully, that we are providing less traffic and less density than what is approved on the current site with this plan this evening. And we are also maintaining the RC zoning. Next item is there are eight criteria that we must establish for a use permit. You got a sampling of that criteria in the staff presentation. Now, part of the dilemma I face this evening is I can go through, and I am prepared to go through and discuss each of those eight criteria. I did that at the Planning Commission. I had trouble waking them up by the time I got to the seventh criteria, and they were usually a very attentive group.
All in favor of not having those eight presented? Say aye. All right, move on to the next one.
Good. Excellent. Although I'm here and prepared to do so. But for those of you, and most of you, of course, carefully reviewed the minutes of the Planning Commission, they're discussed ad nauseam and in detail in that document. The next point I wish to make is that we actually have a user. This is not a speculative zoning case. We have Alliance here, who is the actual user. Alliance is the premier multifamily developer in the valley. They recently received an award, which vindicates the premise that I'm talking about here, where they were recognized as the number-one multifamily developer in the country by Multifamily Executive Magazine. They could have gone anywhere, and they chose this site. They have a reputation for choosing very upscale sites. Two examples very quickly. They have a nice project at Twenty-Fourth and Camelback, some of the most expensive real estate, and arguably, one of the most prestigious locations in all of Arizona. Second, they have one at Gilbert and Scottsdale Roads, again, showing that they're very careful and selective with their choices. They only choose quality locations. In order to again confirm that they are here and ready to go, they have filed a DRB application, and we're bringing that forward. I'm getting an evil eye from the mayor, so I'm not going to talk about integration and connectivity. But if any of you are interested, I'll be glad to talk about that later on in the presentation. Number nine. We have here the Peterson Group that are located in the immediate corner. This is a well-known retail developer, and a good one. We have them ready to go to develop this site. They have some great plans for retail on this site, even though they face a very competitive and somewhat Spartan market for retail. But we also have a user there. One of the predicates of their going forward on this project is they need the rudiment of sufficient house tops. And getting this multifamily approved this evening is an important predicate for their going forwards. I also want to point out that the planning staff objections deal almost exclusively, if I could summarize them, with the alleged lack of integration and connectivity. But there's virtually no criticism- But there's virtually no criticism against multifamily use, again, confirming and verifying the decisions that were made by your planning commission. Couple of quick facts, and Mayor, this will, I'm going to wrap it up. I have 12 pages. I've covered eight, but I'll only use one more. Let me first talk about multifamily and Gilbert. Gilbert has the lowest inventory of multifamily units of any municipality in the Phoenix metropolitan area. You have 27.32 units per thousand residents. Vacancy rates in Gilbert and the East Valley is at 5.5%. That, I submit to you, for those that are not acclimated to that very trincid fact, is a very extremely low vacancy rate for apartment buildings. Apartments within a two-mile radius of this parcel have an occupancy of 94.6%. There is a complete dearth of what we call a product for multifamily in this two-mile area. So we're coming in and filling a very important need. The reference was made to the Legacy Village, which was built in 2000. So that is an old apartment complex that's very well-kept up. Again, in vindication of the point I'm trying to make, those apartments have a 93% occupancy rate, even though the buildings were built in 2000. Now, just very quickly, some economic benefits to the town. This project alone will generate $4.7 million in construction tax, sales tax. If office were built there, and by the way, I've talked to various people, and they say, "Well, we agree retail can't go there, but you maybe could build office there." If office were to go there, that would generate, according to the study we had done by Elliot Pollak, which is also in your pack-up, would generate 725,000, juxtaposed against 4.7 million. Once completed, and this is a significant fact, once completed, this project will generate $625,000 per year in ongoing revenue. That is a significant economic benefit to this town. Generally speaking, apartments, households spend 18% more of their disposable income on retail and consumer goods over others. 70% of this money, according to the studies that we have, all of which are in your packet and have been submitted, stays in the local economy. Now, the ultimate question is, what's the most appropriate use for this site? This is my last point, Mayor. It seems to me that there are three possible uses for this site. One is office, two is retail, and three is multifamily. May we now just focus together as we reason on this project, what of those three uses would be the appropriate use here? Let me bifurcate them and go through them one by one. Office. This is not a good location for office. It is not located on a main street. Even putting aside the tremendous vacancy rate of offices, this is not a good location for office. Medical might work here because it could team up somewhat with Banner, but Banner, and we don't fault them for this, when they bought the property imposed a deed restriction so that this piece can be used for medical office. The office market is depressed in this area. Within a three-mile area, the office market has a 25.7% vacancy. The rent since 2007, and I'd like to just make a disclaimer here, that's a little unfair to use the year 2007 because that's the year when everything was booming, but it's what they used in compiling the information. But since 2007, the retail rate, rental rate, has declined 25%. Or the office rate, excuse me, has declined 25%. Is retail in appropriate use? We've been having trouble even developing the retail located at the immediate corner of Gilbert and Warner. Thank goodness, we have a developer pending the outcome of this hearing, but retail is not good here. It's hidden from major streets and suffers from the same lack of exposure that you've experienced and are very cognizant of across the street from City Hall. The property has been vacant and passed over for many years. The vacancy rate for retail is also very high, as you can see from these statistics. That leaves the third choice, multifamily. Multifamily, there's a market. We have a user. We're not speculating. And it was good in 2005. We submit it's still good today. The average occupancy rate, as noted earlier, is 94.6% within a two-mile radius. So in conclusion, three uses are available here: retail, office, and multifamily. Fairness, honesty, and candor necessitates a recognition that the only viable use of those three uses is multifamily. We believe we have demonstrated that with empirical data as well as other pragmatic data that we've submitted this evening. Multifamily is permissible within the RC district, and we ask that we also be allowed then to renew the use permit that expired previously and that you follow the recommendation of your planning commission for approval. Thank you for your patience, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. From the council, any questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, we have three citizens that have turned out or turned in public comment forums. Two wish to speak. One would be identified for the record, please.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to state for the record that Mr. Jason Barney is in favor of the agenda item number 19. With that, I'd like to invite to the podium Trey Akins. If you can state your residence. And three minutes, Mayor. Would that be all right?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. I just have a couple of crib notes, so I promise I don't have nine or 10 pages of stuff to speak about tonight. I do have a company brochure that I'd like to pass along so you guys can see that. Again, Trey Akin with the Peterson Group. Our address is 2800 North Central Avenue. We are primarily a retail and mixed-use development company. Jim Peterson unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but you guys have probably passed some of our projects. One of the last ones we did, which was about seven years ago, was the Casa Grande Promenade project. If anyone's driven from Phoenix down to Tucson, you've probably seen any Casa Grande where Dillard's and Target are. Due to the recession, that's the last project that we've been able to do. Another project we've done up in Scottsdale. If anyone's been at Scottsdale and Frank Lloyd Wright, where the spire is, we did that project as well. So fast forward seven years. This is the first time I've actually been able to get in front of a council. I'm excited about that. We're very enthusiastic about this particular project. We're hoping that this case gets approved tonight. Our purchase contract has been sitting idle for about six weeks. We're pretty much done pending the approval of this case. We've got some tie-in issues regarding cross-access, Palm Lane, how the reimbursement of the road improvements end up, and so on and so forth. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but we hope that it gets approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to invite Jerry McBeep to the podium.
Now, Jerry, are you coming out of retirement?
Yes. Just for this chase, in this case only.
Okay.
I did one more timing. I told Paul, "One more time, or I'm going to put knots on your head." Okay. Anyway, my name is Jerry McBeep, and I appreciate three minutes. I'll hold it there. I want to take you, I want to take you out of this zoning case right here, and I want to take you to the intersection of Baseline and Stapley, Cooper Road, and I want you to visualize what's at that intersection. What's there? On the northern side, we have Mesa. We have Walmart and a big complex there, restaurants, yada, yada, yada. On the east-western side of Stapley, we have lots of fast food places, and behind all that, we have an extension of University of Phoenix, don't we? Do you know what Mesa wanted to do one time? And we stopped. They wanted to put a trash recycling facility right there. Duh. Then we come back to the south side, and our turf, and we have what we have on the eastern side. We have a few little restaurants there, and hot dogs, and Subway, and a few other things. And all the way down, about 2,500 feet worth, all the way down to Baseline, or to Gilbert Road. And we got a little shopping center there. At one time, Gilbert, and big planners and high-priced attorneys, and I, and you are, Paul, come in and says, "Gilbert, we got to have that. Gilbert, we got to have that. We're going to, you can make money, you can make money, you can make money." And then, across the street, on the western side of Cooper now, because once we crossed Baseline, it changed from Stapley to Cooper. What do we see over there? What's over there? A cash cow for the town of Gilbert, isn't it? Do you know that we had more developers come in and want to put big apartments? And this time, they wanted to say, "Oh, we're going to put in here, we're going to put a big hotel complex for you." Beautiful palm trees, swimming pools, sandy beaches, girls in grass skirts, and all that kind of stuff out there. That went over like a lead weight. Now, what do we have up there? We stopped that. We have commercial entity up there. We have Granger's, we have fries, not fries, but we have all the other stuff in there. Yes, we do have fries up in there. All that other stuff. No, we don't. That's right. We have Kohl's, that's the one thing. We have a bunch of stuff up there. And then all the stuff to the west side. And the housing stopped right there because the mindset, "I got to have houses, I want this, I want that." We stopped it. Now, I want to bring you out of there and bring you right back to this corner, right there, this intersection. What do you see there? I see a boondoggle. We have, what, 800 apartments planned for that particular area if we allow this to go through? I will acquiesce a little bit. The southern part, down here in the back, and on the back side, let them have it. Put that part up to the pro, up to the upper part, makes that. That does not get turned over to anything except use for the community of Gilbert. Where are we going to put our rodeo Gilbert Day parades? Where are we going to do our constitutional week's at? Are you going to do it on your little small grass out here, behind the council? Where are we going to do it? Stop and think what you're giving up. You're not doing the town of Gilbert any favors. Let's not do that. Stop and think. You're here to make the best decision for the citizens of Gilbert, and this is not one of them. Thank you. Oh, and I wanted to add one more thing, please. Mr. Gol, Paul Gilbert, used every carrot in the basket. I think he hooked every one of them out there, and some of you bit, and some of you didn't.
Council members, do you have questions, comments for any of those who have presented? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Mr. Akin, can, would you mind just sharing a little bit more about, you know, if this is approved, what your thoughts are in a little bit more detail for the corner in terms of office and retail?
Sure. We're, we're looking at primarily a retail-type project, probably a little bit more upscale, boutiquey type. We're dealing with a couple of smaller national grocery-type guys. We have not been able to go meet with them yet. We haven't even had a chance really to sit down with staff yet and talk about what we're proposing to do, but we're planning on building somewhere around 85,000-plus square feet of primarily retail. There will be a lot of fast casual dining opportunities, some restaurant. I understand that some of the new restaurants in downtown Gilbert are succeeding quite well right now, so we think there's a tremendous opportunity. That market is really doing well right now. But again, this is going to be, we're used to doing much bigger product. This is 11 and a half acre site, and so it's very manageable for us. We've got, I don't know, dozens of tenants that are excited about meeting Gilbert right now, and we are ready to go. But that's, you know, it's, we're, we're, we think we've come up with some really neat design concepts. We hope staff will agree with us. But as soon as this case hopefully gets approved, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cooper?
Follow-up question, Mr. Akin, before you sit down. Just want to understand your interest in the corner. I can understand. Could you speak to whether there would be any interest in the other parcel that's proposed for apartments?
For retail, primarily no. I mean, most of the, we usually look at section-line corners. Most of our national and regional-type tenants are not going to be hidden back in the back. I mean, you might see a, you know, we're seeing some infill stuff. If you're at a major downtown-type area, we're starting to see some high-rise stuff there. There's not enough density here to do that, and I honestly believe that apartments are probably going to be the best type use for this back piece. As a retail developer, we like to see the density. You know, I think here, you have an opportunity to live here. You know, you can work in the area. You got a lifetime fitness. I mean, it's hard to get a lifetime fitness deal to land anywhere. Congratulations on having them here. So I think ultimately, with a retail-only primarily-type project, I think we're going to be very successful. I mean, we waited seven years to finally get back. We usually follow multifamily by a couple of years. I think this project probably will be in the ground, under development, in a year. So I think there's going to be enough synergy to get it. We've already talked to a couple of national tenants right now that have got interest in it, so we're excited. Thank you.
Any other questions for Trey? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Other questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Bray?
I have a question for Mr. Gilbert. You talked about the eight different things that the project is supposed to meet, and none of us want to hear all eight of them. But I do have a question on one, that there seem to be a lot of concern from the planning commission, and that is the interconnectivity, the ability to work, walk back and forth, run back and forth, get in and out, et cetera. And you had mentioned that there were some deed restrictions as to what could be developed in that parcel. And I believe that at one point, you've said, maybe it was in a meeting that you and I had, that there were some concerns from Banner about accessibility and things of that nature. Can you speak to that? Because that seemed like that was one of the major hang-ups from the planning commission.
Yes, I'd be very happy to. Connectivity is important because of the RC zoning. Let's talk about that. First of all, I've got to be candid and readily admit that by putting Banner in the middle of these two parcels, connectivity is a lot more challenging. It doesn't stop there. Banner said when they came in, and they made it clear to you, it's in the minutes, "We don't want to be connected at all with any of the surrounding parcels." So I'm stuck with a zoning ordinance that requires connectivity with Banner in the middle that says, "We don't want to do anything about it." So knowing that was a problem, we went back to Banner and said, "Banner, would you reconsider connecting to the other two parcels so that we could have a true RC regional commercial development?" I'm pleased to say that after our meetings with Banner, and there was some significant give-and-take in these meetings, Banner agreed to help connect with the other two parcels. So only if you approve this parcel tonight will you have connectivity. Now, how does it connect? Let me go through these one at a time. First of all, Banner has agreed to a joint access parking agreement. So the retail that hopefully we will sell to the Peterson Group will connect to the parking lot of Banner. So those two parcels are now connected up. They weren't before. There's no requirement that Banner has to do that. They have entered into an agreement with us to do so. And incidentally, Banner is also supporting our application. So there's your first connectivity, which would not exist but for the approval of this case. Next, we have an access master plan. This master plan shows the extensive vehicular and pedestrian access among the three sites. It doesn't stop among the three sites, but we're also connecting to the town center. I'll develop that in a little I'll develop that in a little more detail in a minute. So this slide or PowerPoint shows all the connection points and all the connectivity. It isn't just vehicular, but it's pedestrian as well. And next, we have agreed with Banner to put a health and fitness trail, seems appropriate, adjacent to Banner, a health and fitness trail between our site and Banner's site. And that is going to be able to be used by both Banner and the apartment complex. So now you've got an integration and connectivity in that health and wellness trail between the two sites. Connectivity is also important because now the only way that employees here at this municipal complex can get to the fitness center and the retail along north of this project is to get in their car and drive. Now with this health and wellness trail, which runs between, that red arrow's a little faint, but you can see, there we go. This health and wellness trail connects the retail and the LA Fitness Center with the Civic Center here. Again, another point of connectivity of the surrounding area and going beyond just the connectivity of the three sites that are owned by Lehman Brothers and Banner. Next, we have asked Banner, and they have agreed, that they will allow us to have a pathway across the southern portion of their site. So now you've got another connection access point that didn't exist before this case came along, connecting Banner and the retail and the multifamily with the retail. And Banner has agreed to let us put that pathway in along our site. Another important connecting point is Palm Lane. When you, Palm Lane is located south of the three parcels where the arrow is pointing. Palm Lane doesn't connect. Palm Lane doesn't go through. The major reason it doesn't go through is when you approved Banner, you didn't require it to be put in. Normally, you require a developer to only develop this adjacent street, which is adjacent to his property. In this case, we are committing to improving and putting Palm Lane in all the way through. So Palm Lane, again, is a connection point between these parcels. There is, and we're agreeing to put the whole road in, not just the road adjacent to our site. So we'll put it in in front of Banner, and we will also put it in, in front of the commercial site in advance. And agreeing that as a condition of the building permit for Alliance on the multifamily, we'll put the entire Palm Lane street in. Next, we have connectivity in the form of similar architecture. We kind of had a misfire, to be candid with you, when we went to the design review board. We were looking more of a Santa Barbara-type feature for this multifamily. The design review board let us know in no uncertain terms, they did not like that and wanted us to integrate with the rest of the site. We've done that. So now the architecture that we're proposing is integrated with Banner, with the Civic Center, and another form of connectivity. We've done the same thing with landscaping. Our landscaping connects, so there will be a commonality of landscaping all the way across all three parcels. So lastly, we're supposed to have a mixed-use integration. Think about that. Mixed use. The only way you can have a mixed use is if you have residential. The only way you're going to have residential is if multifamily is approved on this project. So we think we've made out a very compelling case for connectivity, which won't exist if this case is not approved. I hope that answers your question. Probably gave you the full load of hay when you only wanted a bite. Sorry.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
Mr. Gilbert, you mentioned an item about a deed restriction. I did not see that in any of the documentation that you shared with me. I'm kinda curious as to the language of that deed restriction, to the types of businesses that sounded like might be in competition with Banner Health. Can you help me understand what that is? Or is it something that's easily read?
Yes. I, I apologize. That is my error. I assumed it was in your council packet, but maybe it wasn't. But I, I drafted the deed restriction and gave it to your town attorney. So it's in the record. And basically, that deed restriction makes it very clear that you can only have retail commercial uses on this piece of property. Retail commercial uses would not compete with Banner and would not be in violation of the deed restriction. I have the, a copy of it, if you would like to see it. It's seven pages, but I, I-
Can you summarize the types of businesses that-
I can. Basically, it provides the use and operation of the restricted property, which is the property For multifamily or single-family residential purposes are prohibited unless approved by the town in its sole and absolute discretion. So Gilbert has complete control over not allowing residential there. And then in other places, we have references to the fact that it will be used for retail uses. Retail uses would be uses that are very similar to what are across the street in the Gilbert Town Center. Retail uses are the type of uses that were described by the representative from the Peterson Group as well. This would be, for example, a Sprouts or a Whole Foods could go there and concomitant retail uses, but only retail uses.
So like if a business that was focused in providing physical therapy, or a business that may provide, you know, eye care or other businesses like that, am I understanding that those types of businesses would not be allowed to be part of those general offices that you show in the northwest corner of the prop, of the property there?
That is correct. And, and remember, we started off showing offices there, but then as we got into this more and saw the concern of the town wanting more retail, we've removed the offices that has to be retail.
Councilmember Cooper, do you have an item on that?
Yeah, it's to clarify on that. Mr. Gilbert, I think you said that when Banner bought the property, they forced, or there was an agreement with Lehman on the rest of the parcel, which includes the corner and the apartment, the proposed apartment area. So that currently, right now, as we, as we sit today, there's a deed restriction on both of those parcels that says there can be no medical office or no medical uses. The deed restriction that Mr. Gilbert is talking about is a completely different one. And, and I'll let you clarify, but my understanding of it is that you are further stipulating, you're, you're, you can't concede on the, you can't put medical office anywhere even right now. But on that parcel up there in the, in the corner, on, on the corner, you are stipulating that it will be a retail-focused center.
Correct.
Okay. So that, right now, as we stand today, there is already no opportunity to have medical office on either of those parcels.
Mayor, members of the council, I would, in reviewing the residential or the proposed deed restriction, there is reference that prohibits, or it does prohibit, the use of multifamily or single-family residential uses. But Paul and I would have to discuss in more detail about other non-retail uses that might be, that may be desired, but we may not, we wish to have prohibited. Now, so it doesn't, the agreement that I have before me doesn't, does not simply say limited to retail, it simply limits, it prohibits residential uses. Now, and with regards also to Mr. Gilbert's comments, yes, I would agree that this can be enforced, you know, if it says what we wish it to say.
And, and we have agreed in all the hearings that this will be extended, so only retail can go at that corner.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
I have a question for staff. One of the questions I asked earlier in the week was an update to the residents at Gilbert Town Square as to where they're at in their development of that apartment complex. Can you share what you may have discovered?
Mayor, members of the council, I called the applicant that had filed that rezoning a year and a half ago and talked to him about the, the development cycle and where he believed they were at. And he indicated to me that we should be seeing something from them within the first quarter of 2015. So according to that applicant, the project is not dead. They're, they're working through some issues, and we should be seeing something fairly soon.
Kyle, while you're at the microphone, and you'll probably have a stronger voice than I will, we were, this is a bigger picture, but I think for the council, this will be a good review. And we could, if you've got a slide, great, but if not, we can probably just do it verbally quickly. I was with Kyle for a couple of hours today, just talking and having him remind me, when Kyle did a presentation a couple of years ago, the strategy that we agreed to as a council, and here's a summary, and then you can add to it, that in our master plan, we have about 7,000 units of multifamily with another 6,000 to be built, so that we would have about 13,000 units. And I think as some of the developers have come forward, where there's a, a stronger mark for multifamily and that Gilbert has less, there's, there's several proposals coming. And where it has been on, in our general plan, land that has been designated for multifamily, that's full speed ahead, no question, well, other than going through the regular process, but there hasn't been major concerns. This would be a plot of land that would, even though in past it did have some ties to multifamily, would be something a little bit different than what the general plan. Now, in looking at Gilbert compared to Chandler, other communities, Gilbert, Chandler as an example, would have about two and a half times the multifamily that Gilbert has at build-out with what we've have planned, it would be about double. So I guess we could take a step back and say, well, maybe we should consider more, which is different than the strategy that we discussed a couple of years ago and agreed to as a council. There's also the discussion about millennials and in that 15 to 32 age bracket that, that they tend to maybe want more flexibility, and multifamily has been of interest to them. In Gilbert, we have recently had some luxury apartments, and that seems to be a good fit. In this case, would this proposed project, would we consider it luxury, do you think, or would it be a different distinction?
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, I would say that any apartment developer that enters the town of Gilbert's gonna be on that luxury side.
Okay. And I may just stop for a minute because you might have some slides that we talked about. But just to give the council a reminder as to what we decided and where Gilbert is going for the future, unless we change direction. Do you have some other comments you could make?
Mayor, just a few. I did put together some of those maps that, that we had discussed and that you had seen previously in some of the retreats. The map on the, on the screen right now shows the existing single, or the existing multifamily developments that are in, within the town of Gilbert. That is the future multifamily sites. That would be the total multifamily in the town of Gilbert at build-out. What's interesting to note is, is the 292 acres that are still vacant, at a unit rate of about 18 units in acres, about 5,250 units there. There's 65 acres that are about the 14-unit-per-acre range. That gives you about 910 units. That's a total of 6,166 additional units to be constructed in the town. If you add that to the number of existing units, and our numbers differ a little bit from what Mr. Gilbert showed, our numbers show about 7,000 units that exist now in the town of Gilbert. So you add those two together, we end up with, with closer to 13,000 units at the end of build-out. Now, having said that, what those numbers don't take into account, based on the maps, the maps are showing areas that are zoned multifamily or shown on the general plan as multifamily. We have regional commercial zoning that is out next to Santan Mall. There have been apartments approved with integrated mixed-use development in the RC zoning district out there, and the total of that is about 1,200 or about 1,126. So by the time you add all of these up, you get to about 14,600 apartment units in the town of Gilbert. Again, we're still less than Chandler, but it has increased since the time that we had that, that original retreat.
Kyle, with this map up, that's, that's another good message. A lot of the multifamily tends to, from an economic development standpoint, be close to some of the job corridors. And, and I see that in our northwest part. I see that near the Banner MD Anderson Cancer Center, the, the future Cooley Station, then of course along the 202. This area around Town Hall, and I know that as we talked about, the Town Square Apartments to the west, we did have a lot of the business owners come in and, and request that they would be approved. To the council last week, opened the first Twilight Farmer's Market, and their new owners across the street, and they also expressed to me that they would be in favor of this proposal because they're also looking for density and, and future customers. But as far as job corridor, I wouldn't really call this area a job corridor. And I guess national studies talk in terms of a two-mile radius. Arizona might be more like a half-mile radius just because of our weather conditions. But any additional comments related to employment where multifamily might be placed as it ties into this area right here?
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, looking at the immediate area and looking at the proposed and approved multifamily coming into the area, we start talking about that quarter-mile, half-mile from Civic Center. With those approvals, there was essentially, the corner would be the last little bit at Gilbert and Warner. That corner would be the last little vacant area for any type of office or, or retail along with the, the centers across the street. So taking out chunks of regional commercial zoning for multifamily is gonna reduce the amount of office that, that we could potentially put in those, those areas.
Any other slides that you had?
No, sir.
Okay. So I think the council, I, that's not necessarily in the scope, so we can move on, but it was helpful to me to just have a sense of what we decided a couple of years ago, and, and maybe at some future discussion, we may feel like we need more multifamily, but at, at least that was a good review and helpful for me today.
Mayor, would it be considered presumptuous if I also had a chance to respond to those questions?
Please.
First of all, you have to remember, this site has an approved multifamily plan on it. It has an ordinance that shows multifamily. So this is already a multifamily site. Secondly, there are some very important reasons why Alliance has selected this site. They could have gone anywhere in the valley, anywhere in Gilbert. But I think it's important for you to hear why they selected this site and to confirm that it's a luxury complex. So Ian, if you'd come up and introduce yourself and name that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ian Squirgle. My address is 2415 East Cowan Back Road. I'm the managing director for Alliance's Southwest Division. And as Paul and Mr. Gilbert mentioned earlier, you know, we are at this point now the number one developer in the country. That being said, we're also, you know, we find our home here in the valley. So we know this valley very well. We know the, the draws, the demands of what a renter profile and demographic is looking for. And you're correct, Mayor, we're, they are looking a lot for that employment locations, you know, proximity to employment. That being said, in this most recent development cycle, where we've been focused a lot on these- said, in this most recent development cycle, where we've been focused a lot on these, call it less traditional locations, that do have a strong entertainment and retail demand. I guess more specifically, as Mr. Gilbert mentioned, our successes at 24th Street and Cowanback, downtown Scottsdale, a little further north, that's in the Paradise Valley adjacent, we're finding a lot of those millennials and those renters by choices that have that discretionary income are choosing less so the proximity to employment, but more so also to a combined holistic approach of near their entertainment, where they're spending their time, where they're shopping. You know, obviously, the successes of Gilbert Town Square as it develops, what we see that occur at the Gilbert and Warner location, as well as the successes of the Heritage District, you know, that we're a mile and a quarter away from that location. We find that there is a strong demand for renters in this location. We collectively manage 13,000 units across the entire valley. And so we're constantly tracking where's our demographic, where does our true customer want to live? And we're finding this location is really a demand for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Just had a couple of quick questions for our counsel, legal counsel here. Mike, if you can tell me real quick, when we're looking at a use permit process, we have findings of fact, and I've been taught previously, and I want to confirm if I'm remembering this properly, but that as we find that they meet the certain criteria that we're supposed to be looking at, that it's an administrative process as far as if they meet it, then they should be approved. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay, so...
And that's with regard to the conditional use permit process, not the rezoning process?
Sure, but let's talk about the zoning. That was my second question. Thank you for the good segue. Zoning is also by right. Now, there's a limitation in the zoning for multifamily. There's a condition that they have to meet, a plan for integrated mixed use. But is it fair to also say that if they meet that stipulation, then they by right have the commercial, or the multifamily use, if they meet that condition that's listed in the zoning?
Mayor, members of the council, you don't, the granting of a change in zoning is a legislative act, and that is not by right. And so consequently, you could conclude that no, we don't wish to change the zoning or change the various uses or restrictions on use that are currently attached to that property.
Thank you. One last question. How would this work, though? Because we have a PAD that is currently active, that is impossible to follow now. So how can this property ever be used at all without some amendment to the PAD?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe the, whether it's impossible is a finding of fact or a determination you'd have to make, and that might be disputed.
Meaning there's an approved site plan that goes with that PAD that is no longer possible. So I guess what I'm asking is how would this property ever have any use without amending, either removing it from a PAD and going to conventional zoning, or amending and creating a new PAD?
Another site plan could be approved that meets the standards or the requirements of the PAD and would not, and meets the letter and intent of the PAD that I believe could be approved.
Isn't that the argument the applicant's making tonight, is they're proposing to do just that? They don't want to change their zoning, they're just amending the PAD to change the site plan?
Yes, with regard to the zoning change, but that's not by right.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
It may be time to just have a good pulse from the council as to how we're feeling, and that'll tell us whether we have more questions. Let's start at either this end or this end. Who wants to go first?
Mayor, I'll just, since I'm on a roll here. First of all, Peterson Group has no relationship to me. I just want to put that out there. If it did, I would declare a conflict of interest. I know it seems like Petersons are everywhere, and they're taking over, and they're all connected, but guess what? They're really not. And I wish I had some ownership. I'm sure it's a company doing well. But anyway, with that aside, as I look at this case, the administrative, the use permit is administrative to me. I think we're obligated to try and honor some kind of a use here which requires a change to the PAD. So to me, I think to honor their rights, I think we also need to allow for some change there. So for me, the question is, does it meet all the requirements? And I think the zoning, the planning commission, excuse me, they hit it right on the money as far as the most challenging requirement, and that's all related to the integrated mixed-use plan. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and it is, it can be challenging to decide if it meets that requirement. But as I studied it, the language in the use permit findings of fact does provide for a planned mixed-use or integration with a neighboring property. So it clearly contemplates that scenario, which is what we have tonight. I agree also that we can't achieve the same level of integration that would have been possible within the same property. But our code doesn't limit the opportunity to meet that criterion of mixed-use integration to the same property. It does allow for integration with adjacent ones. And I believe, now, is it integrated enough? I also, I respect that question. Planning Commission said horizontal integration is not sufficient. I think there's an argument that you could make, you can make that argument. But the fact still remains, there is integration with those neighboring uses. Is it enough for some people? Maybe not. But to me, there is. There's enough, and I think it meets the criteria. And so I'm ready to approve it just based on those simple findings.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
So I appreciate Mr. Gilbert for spending so much time with me explaining this and offering his point of view. And I disagree with Councilmember Peterson when it comes to the integrated mixed-use. I, this idea of the Peterson Group on the corner sounds great, but it sounds like it's still a wish for multiple people. Just the idea that the Peterson Group has yet to even speak with the company shows me that there's possibility there, and we hope for it, but that there's nothing that is certain by any means. And if this apartment or multifamily project is not approved, the Peterson Group may leave and not purchase it, and I get that, and that's obviously a risk the town has to take. And it would, in my opinion, be a bigger risk if there was something set in stone there. But because it sounds like there's still just ideas and potentially good ideas, they're simply ideas at this point. And I don't think there's much integrated mixed-use. I mean, there's a dirt trail there with some pieces of equipment on it, but it doesn't, there's not enough for me. I understand that with the Banner location there, it makes it difficult for Mr. Gilbert, for his clients. I understand that. That was something that they chose to do. That was not something that the town forced on them. Yes, the town did support the Banner project, but there was never, in my understanding, the town forcing them to come to those restrictions with the Banner property. And so it doesn't seem like a real mixed-use plan to me. It seems like a multifamily project with something potential that could turn into a mixed-use someday, but at this point, it doesn't pass the test for me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
In review of the request, I feel that, for me, that I would like the entire parcel of land to be non-residential based. In fact, it sounds like they could have proposed an opportunity that both locations have, in the sense as I heard, retail. Now, not to say retail is the proper or right type of product for this time. I do know that the other apartment complex over at the Gilbert Square, I had a very, very difficult time approving of that project because I did not want to flip from commercial to some type of residential. And, you know, that project has been on hold for about a year. It sounds like there's going to be some activity that's going to be occurring sometime in the beginning of next year. I feel like I want to be patient. Let's see how that project matures and grows. Let's see if the benefits of retail come on behalf of that project being completed. I don't believe we're in any rush to move forward with this particular project. My feelings about apartment complexes have been where I feel that those types of projects should be near our larger freeways and extremely large shopping centers, like around the Santan Mall area. You know, when I look at the amount of units that are going into this area, there are 307 units that would be going into the Gilbert Town Square. That literally would double what we currently have today that's over at the Legacy Village. So we now will double that without even knowing what the impact of that would be. And then with this project adding another 250 units, again, we're looking at potentially over 3X the amount of units in this particular area, not even knowing what the impact of the 307. So I'm more about being a little bit more patient. Let's see the other project mature, get established. Let's see what the results of that is. And then, you know, at some later date, maybe look at this project again. So again, I'm not in favor of moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Nathan, could I ask you to put the slide up that showed those numbers that Vice Mayor Cook just went through? It was a map, and it showed the number of units in, you know, in play in this area? Yeah, that's the one. Thank you. This is a map that maybe helps frame some of my thoughts on this area. Because when I look at just the whole area, you know, and the sum total there is the 863, if you look at the existing 147 behind Lifetime Fitness, and then the three proposed, well, there's the 307 that's approved. Maybe we'll see those next year. But even though Jerry is not going to like my conclusion here, I agree with a couple of points he made there, which is preserving the commercial on the roads. I think that's a really important point. So when I look at where these units are placed, the ones off the road, off Warner, make more sense to me because it keeps Warner, you know, available where we can put the commercial. So one of the things that I liked about the Gilbert, this particular proposal is it does put that commercial on there, and I think that deed restriction does give some power to realize that. I did attend a neighborhood meeting on, a couple of days ago, on the proposed 153 units there, and, you know, granted, I live in the neighborhood next to it. But, you know, to Jerry's point earlier, commercial on Warner Road or any major arterial is more, much more valuable than off, you know, those roads. So I guess just summarizing my thoughts, Mayor, I'm open to it. I'm, you know, willing to vote in support of this because it does keep the commercial on Warner. We'll talk about that other one as it comes through, but you could probably get my thoughts on that one. It checks, you know, the integration topic is important. You know, I don't know that they have a lot of options on that. I guess when I looked at that, I think staff makes some very important points in there. But the game changed, you know, and I don't know that they really have a lot of options here. So I don't know that it's perfect, but it checked the box. You know, it's a satisfactory proposal, just given all of the limitations that we have. And then I do think it is significant to have that Palm Lane going through there. And then just speaking for Constitution Week, I've, you know, I'm not on the board anymore, but I know that they're already planning on moving off. They know that their days are numbered at this for a variety of reasons. So that's, that was brought up. So let me just address that real quick. Constitution Week Day, yeah, that's going to continue, not at this site. This site is not likely to have that going forward. But Mayor, I think those are the high points that I'll just share in terms of my thoughts, so I'm ready to support.
Councilmember Daniels?
Most of my concerns have actually already been addressed, and Paul and I had a great conversation. I appreciate your time and energy and willingness to share. I'm actually totally entertained when you come and speak, so I'm okay if you take a couple hours. It's totally fine with me. But out of respect for the mayor losing his voice, I guess we'll keep moving. My biggest concern really is the integrated element and the deviations I also have some heartache over as well. And I think between those two issues, it's been stated substantially, I do have one issue, and that is that the town of Gilbert really can take no blame for the Banner site. And I don't know if it was inadvertent or not, but our excitement does not necessarily institute us imposing those deed restrictions or us eliminating some of the options on the site by that purchase. And so while we may have been excited to have a site like Banner within the town of Gilbert and so close and in close proximity to Town Hall, we did not, as a town, impose those deed restrictions. We did not limit some of your opportunity through that process. That was solely done, I would imagine, in order to make the deal. And we have, you know, complete respect for that. But I did get the sense that the town of Gilbert may be taking some blame for that, and I would hope that that wouldn't be the case. As far as the retail on the corner, of course, we'd be excited to have that. And I think our town staff and employees that work here would love places to walk to go and get that. But I do have concern about the integration. I have concern about the deviations. And for those reasons, Mayor, I will not be supporting this project.
Councilmember Cooper?
I ask those that don't have concerns, or that have concerns about integration, where were you on the night that Banner was approved? Because you effectively, and I was one of them, voting for that case effectively pretty much dismantled any opportunity for integration for this project or any project that comes down the pike. So think about that. I really think we do, we, not the town of Gilbert, we, the council of the town of Gilbert, have some responsibilities to bear. So I, it's kind of surprising to me that we would, you know, obviously, the deed restrictions, no, but if integration is that big of a deal, that's surprising to me that it wasn't brought up before when we were obviously cutting that site in half. But if it's not this use, and I think that's probably what's really at the heart of this for some of our council members, if it's not this use, I really want to know what use makes sense. It's kind of a little bit of deja vu all over again from a case we had last year. It can't be medical. It's not going to be retail, no matter how much we dream or hope that it might be. Look at how much the project across the street has struggled in terms of attracting retail. It's not going to be good for employment. My time at GPEC told me office and employment uses of the size that we're talking about here most generally land within a mile or two of a freeway because they need that access. And in this case, we're not anywhere near that. And if you want examples of other office space that is not functioning up to, you know, he already gave you some statistics. Look at the office complex across the street from Western Skies. Very comparable, located on, just off of Val Vista, which is our busiest street, as far as traffic counts are concerned, north and south, pretty much. And it struggled. It's just off of that corner. Look at Lindsay and Warner, how long that project has taken to find its legs. And then we're looking at this. So if not this use, what use? I don't see it as a loss of commercial, if that's your concern. And to me, it's more similar to what we did behind Fry's, just to the south, as we took an infill piece, and we put it to use as opposed to let it sit there so that we can have parking for our events. Heritage District, one of the findings that's coming out of all of our discussions down there is that we do, part of the reason retail has struggled in the Heritage District, and while we have great restaurants, our retailers, ask every one of them, it's been a challenge for them, is a lack of residential in the area. And this is a use that can help support that. And this is a use that can help support that. I, I'm just kind of perplexed at, you know, it's, what else would you put there? Obviously, the project that was first planned, not going to happen, never was going to happen probably, and now we're left with what we're left with, and it's a challenge. And so I just wonder about that. I was prepared to support it tonight and still am. I wouldn't change that deed restriction on the corner, the way it's written, just to, where it excludes residential, I think if you get it too narrow, just focused on retail, I think that may be, that may preclude some uses that we could put in there, so I wouldn't do that. But if you would stipulate, and I think you have, to the integration circulation that you have discussed tonight, I think that's plenty adequate, and it's as much as you will ever get from another user on those parcels.
Let's see if I can keep the voice, voice up for this. The, the feeling that I have is it's going to shift the patience I'd like to have and the also preference of keeping commercial space has been very important to our economic development team. It just feels like though this, sort of what Councilman Cooper just said, that the patience would be, in 20 years, we'd be talking about an infill project. The event that probably has swayed me was a week ago, in Town Square, we have new owners, and they're trying to bring some excitement to that area by having Twilight Farmer's Market. And in talking with them, they're very anxious to try and help this area, and it does seem like the same reason why, even though I was not excited about apartments where the 307 units are, that caused me to switch my feelings had to do with supporting the local businesses that are here, who came and spoke in favor of that, and hearing the owners across the street, they can use some help. And it just feels to me like I'm ready to give them that, give them that help. And so my feeling was really more to be patient, to wait, but I've probably shifted and I'm ready to go forward. So with that, I'm ready to close the public hearing unless there's anything else. So I close the public hearing on agenda items 19 and 20, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Please.
Here's a question.
Can I say one thing? I apologize. One thing that I'm interested, it sounds like it's going to pass, one thing I'm interested from Mr. Gilbert and maybe at this point no one is going to pass, they're not interested in this, but I would like something from them that guarantees that Alliance is going to build here. My concern is, we approve this, Alliance, for whatever reason, we've seen this on the west side of Gilbert Road, Alliance decides not to go forward, for whatever the reason is, and then a different apartment company, multifamily company comes in and decides to build there. So it's up to them, they don't have to do this, but I would love to get an agreement from them that it will be Alliance that builds here.
And a question to the town attorney. Could that be used in the form of a motion that this vote is contingent upon Alliance coming in?
Mayor, members of the council, no, it could not. The only thing that we could discuss would be the terms and conditions of the deed restriction.
Okay, thank you.
With regards to, you know, the issue that Councilman Cooper was discussing, and the issue I mentioned before about right now it prohibits residential use, do we wish to have it say anything else?
And to Councilmember Ray, would you like the applicant to speak to that?
If we can't force it, I don't think it helps the applicant to speak about it. I mean, I'd love to have him say, "Yeah, we're going to do it," but we can't force it at this point, so I don't think it's worth their time to get up.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, did you have a comment?
This is really a question back to staff on the, the, I'll call it the northern boundary of the apartment complex. I know we had some discussion about the connectivity of the roadway. Is it staff's desire to actually have some type of a roadway through there that connects the east to the west? Can you, because I know you were, were talking to me a little bit more about that. What would be, in your mind, an ideal type of roadway through there?
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, Vice Mayor Cook, are you speaking about the commercial side or the side between the apartments?
Well, it would be between the Banner Health and the apartments. There's...
Okay. The, when Banner first approached the town and we were working with the property owner at the time in Banner, the, if you, you can see the parcel lines there for Banner, there was always envisioned, and the agreement was in place at that time, that Banner would build the first half of that roadway, and when this piece of property developed, they would build the second half of the roadway connecting Civic Center to Palm. When the apartment complex came in and with the walls surrounding it, there was no indication or direction to have that connection any longer. They wanted to get away from that. That's when they approached Banner and talked to them, and at that point in time, no Banner did not want to have that connection between an apartment complex and their medical offices. If it was more of a commercial use, or a shopping center, or other medical offices, then that, that back and forth and that access would have been important, would have been something that the town would have desired. If it's going to be an apartment complex like this with, with the separation and the two land uses, then, then that roadway between Civic Center and Palm is really not that important.
Mayor? Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items 19 and 20.
Is there a second?
Yes, my second.
Okay, please vote.
Is that, I'm sorry, Mayor and council, there was, I wasn't sure if there was any stipulation with regards, there's no stipulation from the planning commission with regards to a deed restriction.
Excuse me?
And I don't know if anybody would wish to amend their motion to include a deed restriction.
My, my motion includes a stipulation of the deed restriction that we've already received.
Okay.
And so does my second.
Okay.
But the, yes, I, the deed restriction that's been presented as it focuses only on eliminating residential.
That's correct.
Do we need to revote? Or do you still have the, so we vote, okay? Please revote. That's approved with a four three vote, thank you. We skipped over number, agenda item number six, and said we would put that under administrative items, so let's go to agenda item number six. And in talking about number six, just a few comments, the, and this is to bring the whole council together. At the retreat in August, we had extensive discussion about the needs assessment, and after the retreat, I found myself following up with Gabe and with Jessica in discussion about what was going to happen next, and we did have some assignments for town staff, we did have some assignments for the Human Relations Commission. When I approached them, they had mentioned that two other council members had similar questions, some related to domestic violence, some related to could home funds be used for home repairs? And so the next thing that we talked about was, well, rather than have separate discussions, why don't we just get together? So I wanted the whole council to know that there were, there was a meeting that included myself, Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Ray, where we had some more discussions with staff. We also gave some suggestions. And a few weeks ago, we received feedback that, related to home funds, there were some deadlines tied to some of the home funds, and they gave us some updates on that, and the three of us received a PowerPoint presentation and said it's time to have the information that we had been given presented to the whole council. And so that's the background on agenda item number six, why it appears tonight. I've asked Jessica so that all seven council members are up to date on our discussions and some of the things that are being presented to, give us the overview of that PowerPoint. And so Jessica, we'll turn the time to you on agenda number six, and then we'll open it up for some council discussion.
Mayor and council members, for the record, Gabe England, Assistant to the Town Manager. Jessica's going to give the two options that staff is recommending for approval tonight. Prior to that, we wanted to give a little bit of background on how the recommendations came to be. Home funds, as the council knows, are federal funds designed to assist local governments and nonprofits with the creation and retention of affordable housing. A lot of the conversations that council and staff has had is about what are the eligible uses, and even though there's a variety of programs within each of these areas, these are the only allowable areas that we can use home funds in. Recently, the town contracted out to have a human services needs assessment completed. That human services needs assessment identified seven broad populations that were the human services needs group. All seven populations were found to have safe and affordable housing as a challenge and a recurrent theme. The human services needs assessment also went on to rank the frequency of services, social services that Gilbert provides the community, not the town. So this isn't a ranking of the quality of service, but rather the frequency of service. So when recommending these two programs for approval, what we tried to do was tie as many of the identified needs from the human services needs assessment and match them up with the programs you see before you tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jessica Fiero, Neighborhood Services and Outreach Supervisor. I went forward. As you know, the town of Gilbert is a member of the Maricopa County Home Consortium. That's how we receive home funds on an annual basis. We are a member with nine, nine other municipalities in the valley. The Maricopa County Consortium acts as the administrator of these funds and thereby imposes deadlines for expenditure and encumbrance and use of the funds. We currently reallocated fiscal year 12, 13, and 14 monies because they were beyond deadline, and through that process, we were able to retain fiscal year 13 funds as well as our current year allocation, which you will see options on how to administer those funds. So as you see, our fiscal year 12, 13 funds that we have available are $175,000, and our current year 14, 15 allocation is a little over $200,000. So two program options we'd like to present for council's consideration include permanent affordable rental housing and substantial rehabilitation. Permanent affordable rental housing, we've used home funds in the past. We currently have 10 units purchased under this program previously. This is where the town partners with a nonprofit organization to purchase and rehabilitate a home. They move a family into the home and provide wraparound services to help the family reach self-sufficiency. The nonprofit acts as the landlord. The town places a lien on the property for a period of affordability, which is 15 years, and at the end of those 15 years, the town has first right of refusal on what to do with that property. Some of the requirements that go with this program include the nonprofit having to provide a 25% non-federal match. They need to complete a housing market assessment and make sure that the units are, meet quality standards and inspection criteria. Some of our current program participants that are in the 10 units that we have in the town include, 88% of them are employed full-time, 80% are single female head of households, 20% are two-parent households, and 68% have children that are being served through the This program assists six of the seven community needs priority populations identified in the needs assessment. It's designed, and the goal is to increase self-sufficiency of the families residing in these units. They do so by having the residents go through a variety of different services, including job training, employment counseling, budget, and parenting classes. This will increase their education, their employability, and hopefully their income. So they can then move out of these units and into market rate rentals. One of the items moving forward, since we have done this program in the past, we are looking at redesigning the scope of work should this pass this evening. We would go out for a request for proposal to find a quality partner to administer the program. We would have, we would include in the RFP in contract language that our nonprofit partner must comply with HUD regulations, performance metrics, they must provide quality case management to participants, and provide accurate and timely reports to, regarding public safety interaction of the residents. We would like to mention that since 2010, in our 10 units, there have been 58 calls for public safety intervention, with the highest frequency of calls being domestic violence, suspicious activity, or a violation of court order. The second option we'd like council to consider is a program called substantial rehabilitation. This is where home funds are used to alleviate health and safety items in a Gilbert home. These are residents that own their home, they're single-family owner-occupied. There would be a maximum of a $50,000 loan. The town would place a lien on the property until the funds are repaid, either through repayment over a certain period of time or at resale. And then the payments or the funds would go back into a revolving fund to continue to assist other homeowners. We would go out for a request for proposal on this program as well, and so the 25% non-federal match would come from our partner. If at that time we couldn't find a credible partner, we would possibly come back to council at looking, at doing this as an internal program, which may require a halftime FTE. People seeking owner-occupied substantial rehab are, the majority of them are elderly or disabled, they're on fixed incomes, they're not able to complete some of the repairs that are required for them to stay in their homes safely. 38% are female head of household, and 41% are considered very low income by HUD income guidelines, which would make a family of four having an annual household income of just under $24,000 a year. Under this program, it assists four of the seven priority populations identified in the needs assessment. It would help to remove significant health, health, safety, or disability barriers within the home. So we're talking about entire roof replacements or substantial electrical plumbing type issues. It would increase the likelihood of those current Gilbert homeowners to stay in their homes and stay in Gilbert. It would help remove blight from the neighborhoods in which these homes reside and would improve or maintain property values in that area. So the timeline we're proposing for these two programs, should they pass tonight, we would do a request for proposal and award process between December and March. We would come back to council in April to award contracts and request contingency funds. And then the nonprofit or our partner would have essentially 90 days to encumber those funds in order to meet consortium and HUD deadlines. Here's a historical timeline of how we've gotten to this point. Mayor and staff have, has met with Save the Family, which is our previous permanent affordable rental housing partner. We, council was invited to do tours of Save the Family to learn a little bit more about that program. that program. We've had several meetings with mayor and interested council members. And tonight, at this meeting, we're requesting approval of a subrecipient agreement to move forward with these two programs. In order to meet Maricopa County's deadlines, we would need to submit the subrecipient agreement by Monday, November 17th, for them to make it to the Board of Supervisors in December. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jessica, just to, to four members, to four members of the council, thank you. We wanted you to see that presentation that we saw just a few weeks ago so that it could now be a public document and that you're up to date. As a council, knowing that our needs assessment has given us a lot of good information and that home funds can be an important tool, I realize in other discussions that sometimes there's a feeling of we don't want the funds at all. And to the seven of us, I just would ask as favor, that would be a chance when we go to vote that you could just vote no. And I think that sends a message. But I did want for the seven of us to give some input with the use of funds if we choose to go forward, how we would like to use them. And I wanted to start first with Vice Mayor Cook and then Councilmember Ray because the three of us were asking these questions and we have a little more time to think about it. And just for all seven of us, could you give your, summary of your feelings as to how you would recommend we go forward? Vice Mayor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. When we met the three times, I always went back in our meetings to the needs assessment document. And I kept on discussing, you know, the most important or highest priority need was the families in crisis. And I kept on asking staff to look at things that were insufficient domestic violence spaces that we have, and that tended to be the greatest need. And we had a lot, a lot of dialogue about that. It was, you know, somewhat frustrating for me because to me, this particular request from staff, in my mind, it is a need. But again, it wasn't the most important need that was identified in the document. And I think through the dialogue that we had, I know that there was a time limit with these funds. You know, we asked staff, could we connect with the consortium to maybe see if we can take our current funds and others from the other communities to put together potentially a strategy or a plan to maybe address what would be considered, in my mind, from the document, the most critical need? But it seemed like the timeframe was just not there for us for this go-around. And we gave staff direction to look at that, at the next coming around. And I'm hoping that staff will, you know, address this or come back to the council with some type of a strategic plan to look at addressing what would be the most critical needs in our community. But I do understand, again, that the window was short and there was lots of discussion about not, you know, not using the money, but let's use the money to meet some of those, what I would call lower priorities that were in the document. So I think from my view, as relates to a prudent compromise move, knowing that staff is going to look at the most important, critical needs, I was okay to go along with this particular proposal, knowing that this wasn't the most critical. But, you know, for me, moving forward, I think I'm good with that.
Councilmember Ray?
I echo the comments of Vice Mayor Cook. And I look forward to future discussions about other options and other ways to fulfill the needs that were brought about by the needs assessment. With that being said, for what's on the agenda today and what we're focusing on, I'm fine with this. I lean more towards the permanent affordable housing. If we do go forward with the loan program for the repairs on homes, I would strongly prefer that we don't run that internally, that we have an outside company do that, a private market company where they're giving some of the dollars and then they then run it because they would have the expertise, they would have the background, the knowledge, et cetera. Not to say that we don't have people who can get to that point, but I'd rather give it to a company that's doing that full-time. And that may not exist. We'll find out via the RFP, RFQ process. But I'm fine moving forward. I prefer the affordable housing more unless we can find a third party that would do that.
Sure. And Jessica, before I turn to the other council members, so agenda item number six is a proposal to do both. And any quick comments to what Councilmember Ray said? Is that in prior discussion, there are some groups, and that would be the RFP process to see if we could find some outside groups to do that?
Mayor, the item tonight would approve our agreement with Maricopa County to accept these funds and move forward with a request for proposal process on both of the programs.
Okay, thank you. So open up to the council, comments please. Councilmember Cooper?
Supportive.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor, I'm supportive. I don't feel like this is an ideal solution, though. I do have a little bit of heartache about this particular issue tonight. But I can't ignore the needs assessment either. And we asked the community what the needs were, we've identified the needs, and now we know there's a gap in our, in our ability to provide those. And I think that this does assist. And I continue to go back to a conversation that a couple of us had with Congressman Salmon about federal dollars and federal appropriation of funds and what happens to these dollars. And he indicated, and his statement was that unless it is a regional decision to not accept, you know, home funds that have already been appropriated, then we essentially would be punishing Gilbert residents. And those were, that was his statement, that was his direction. And I've taken that to heart over the last, you know, six months to a year as we've had these types of discussions. And now that we have really identified the need, I think that changes some of our conversations here. Again, I'd like to see more measurement. I'd like us to really be able to track some of the progress that we're able to make through the program. I think that's imperative to show value to our residents. So I'd like us to move forward, but I would like us to continue to have conversations.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, just to respect your wish to just kind of focus on, you know, the options here, you know, I think you know some of my thoughts of the other, you know, the larger topic of the federal money. But if we go forward, you know, definitely aligning it, I think Vice Mayor Cook, you know, had a lot of, a lot of good things in terms of, you know, discussing in here. I guess what I'd like to just make sure that we just stay focused on, you know, just trying to solve this longer term in our, in the town of Gilbert. We have so many great faith groups and service groups and families to take this. And while, you know, this is a short-term solution, you know, I just recognize your great work and the work of Councilmember Peterson to develop really the long-term support network that we have in our community to perhaps transition off of this, you know, partnership that, you know, is federal dollars and there's lots of, you know, controversy around that, that allocation. But I think we can take care of ourselves and we have a great community here. And as we just continue to strengthen that, maybe we can look to transition that and strengthen the space even better to serve these, you know, important needs in our community.
Thank you. And I, and I recognize great leadership on your part and Councilmember Peterson with Forest City to use local resources and not rely on resources outside of Gilbert. I thank you. As you said, if, as we are focused on this particular item, we can still continue to do that. And that would be a great accomplishment where we wouldn't even need these funds in the future. And Councilmember Peterson, I'll, let me keep going down then I'll, well, I guess we're to you right now. You did provide a note that, future agenda item and...
You can wait to pass that down till we get to that item on the agenda, Mayor. That's fine.
Please. Councilmember Peterson, any comments you wanted to make?
No, Mayor. I think my views on these topics are pretty clear. I've repeated them enough. I won't spend time on it tonight, but thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Town Manager Baner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If I could make one suggestion when we go out to RFP, if we should not receive any responses from a private sector company to do the housing rehab program, that staff have the discretion to make all the funds available for the home purchase program, and then we'll bring that back to you for final approval.
Councilmember Ray, that is consistent with what you wanted? Okay. So in a motion, which I will now entertain, Councilmember Ray, would you like to do that?
Sure. I move that we approve this item with the comment that Town Manager made where if there isn't a third party, that we give staff the ability to use all the funds for the permanent affordable rentals.
Thank you. Is there a second? Looking for a second?
I was looking for, I thought there would be one from someone that was in those meetings, but second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. And two, I just echo another statement from Councilmember Daniels that the, those involved with the needs assessment have, that tool has continued to help us look to the future with strategy. And so I thank you again for that. And let's proceed now with agenda item 21, which is, is there any discussion for considering the acceptance of the budget report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2015?
Mayor, I move we move to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. Thank you, Don, for being ready. Agenda item 22, Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. Councilmember Cooper?
I know this was covered earlier and will be, it's a current event, but I just want to reemphasize the lighting of the water tower on November 20th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. with music, carriage rides, and fun, bring a chair and a blanket. This is one of those things that I would just want to thank the merchants in the area. They've been discussing this idea for quite a while with us. And times weren't always right for us to be able to proceed. But thanks to the excellent work of our Parks Team in securing sponsorships and some of the other great things that have happened in moving events down there this year, I think these downtown events have been great. This is going to be a wonderful one. So we thank the merchants, we thank the town staff, and we thank the sponsors that make these events so, so possible and so fun.
Thank you. Other reports. Next is the report from our Town Manager.
I think tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Any reports from other council members? Vice Mayor Cook?
I'd like to share with the council that I had the opportunity to participate in the Gilbert Pony Express, which was the kickoff of our Gilbert Day celebration that's coming. Well, they missed you there and they honored us, you and me, with a GPC shirt. And I'd like to present this to you. It actually has inscribed into the shirt, Mayor Lewis. So I'm not sure if it will fit or not, but they were, they were missing you. They were going to get you on a horse and have you kind of do a couple laps on the horse and, you know, cowboy hat and rope on the side and...
Well, I humbly accept and I will try it on and if it fits, it will be worn when I go to the rodeo this weekend. And I will have my cowboy hat on.
There you go.
Thank you. Any other reports from the council? I believe the report from the mayor, we've covered and the mayor's voice is gone. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.